Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Danuski?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Curtis?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Here.
Councilmember Marshall?
Present.
Councilmember Shabnik?
She is running on the line, she will be here. If you will please stand to join me in my pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda if there are no changes to the agenda that will stand approved.
Mike D.
Howdy, Mike D. here. Thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight. Forty-five eighteen Northeast One Hundred Seventy-First Street, Lake Forest Park. I saw your agenda tonight, and, oh, some of these are on the consent agenda, I guess I'm not talking about any of those. But I did want to talk about some things that were on your business agenda, the plastic bag reduction policy, the Hanger Community Use Report, and the acquisition of the property, and a little bit about Public Works. So, real quick, on the plastic bag reduction policy, thank you for your thirty-page memorandum, and your five-page environmental cost of bags report that you have in there, and your fourteen-slide presentation that maybe you'll see tonight. One of the things that I do recommend for meetings kind of like this is maybe a folder with these items for the public, so that they could see, maybe if you had a couple folders with these printed out, that the public could flip through, the stuff that you have online, that would be helpful. As far as that, oh, back to the plastic bag reduction policy. Lake Forest Park is also working on some type of, you know, plastic bag reduction thing, and kind of a takeout container thing. So, I appreciate you helping lead the way to consider doing that tonight. It's something they tried to do in Lake Forest Park in the past, and I guess they had some opportunities with that in there. They'll try again here in the future sometime. As far as the hangar, thank you for the hangar, it's a nice building over there, had the opportunity to have a meeting over there. It was outside, it was kind of packed inside, so we got to meet outside, but it was still a nice place. It was a nice sunny day, and you had the water, and the kids, and all kinds of fun stuff. So, thank you for that. As far as the acquisition of the property, the, I don't know anything about the property and what you're buying there, but the thing that brought to my attention, as a Lake Forest Park resident, is that in your report, it said that your Public Works contract was ending in 2018. And I don't know that we've had any discussion about that in Lake Forest Park, at least for the public, and not the three required touches, so that's interesting to hear. Thank you for being part of the Public Works agreement with Lake Forest Park. There's actually some negotiating that I'd like to, I'm not here to speak for Lake Forest Park, or where the Public Works are any of those people, but, you know, just as myself, but, to do some negotiations, because I know you have some big asks coming up with your, is it Lake Point project? And a number of other things that I've seen at different meetings that you have. Also, it looks like you're going to be spending a lot of money on, maybe like three million dollars on your log boom park, and part of my ask has to do with talking about that. So, I'm wrapping up here, thank you for the opportunity to talk, and I'll bring some flyers for you with some more information, and get down to a little more specifics with you next time. Thank you.
Phyllis Finley.
Good evening. Phyllis Finley, Kenmore. Tonight I have four requests and one question. So, my first request is, while you're considering the elimination of plastic bags, would you please consider plastic straws as well? Second request, please remove all city notice boards that are blank. As you know, people habituate quickly. When notice boards are left blank for the convenience of posting a future notice, that future notice is likely to be misunderstood or ignored. As an example, I was near St. Ed's last summer and noticed a couple looking at the board, and I said, "Do you know what that's all about?" And they said, "Uh-huh, a hotel." Well, no, that was old news. Confusing. Do you really think if you stick a couple of eight-and-a-half by eleven white pieces of paper to an old board to update it, that anyone will notice? Your own city requirements state, "The notice board shall be removed within fourteen days after the end of the designated period." On March fifth, Bridget Baker responded to my inquiry about this, and she said, "The city will remove the notice board within twenty-eight days after the notice of decision." This is within the fourteen days after the NOD appeal period ends. Who knows when that will be? That's a long time for a blank board to be up. So, my third request, if you don't remove the old boards, would you please affix orange flags to them when new information is posted? And finally, my fourth request, this is a follow-up on Councilmember Marshall's request earlier this year for an update on the ball field. Debbie Bent provided this update at a subsequent council meeting. The information she provided pretty much amounted to, "Well, there's nothing much to tell." Having spent somewhere around a half-million dollars so far, I think we citizens need more information than that. She also said that the determination would be announced very soon. It seemed to be imminent. She said, "The reply to the SEPA comments was time-consuming and complicated." Understandable. But SEPA comments were due on September twenty-fifth. It's been nearly nine months. When will this determination be announced, and what has been the delay? So, my fourth request is that another update, as Councilmember Marshall requested earlier in the year, be included again as an agenda item at one of the next council meetings. Specifically, I'd like three things shared. A, an accounting of how much money has been spent so far on that project. B, when the determination will be announced. And C, if an announcement is not imminent, why not? Finally, my question, if you had just recently bought a home at, oh, let's say sixty-six forty-six, Northeast Two Hundred and Second, or how about across the street, at sixty-six forty-seven or sixty-six forty-nine, thinking that you were buying a home in a residential neighborhood, would it be okay with you if a Public Works facility went in next door? Or would you prefer it somewhere like maybe One Hundred and Seventy-Fifth? Where there's trucks coming and going all the time anyway?
Mayor, we're at three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. David Mason.
Hi, I'm David Mason. I've lived here since the ninth of July, nineteen seventy-six, my last tour in the Navy. I've been going up and down Sixty-first Avenue Northeast for all that time, and there's a lot of trees that are leaning over the power lines, and the sidewalk, and of course, the road. And I'd just like to know who's responsible if somebody gets killed, or some auto build damage, who's responsible? The person that owns the property, or the city, or the county? The responsibility for the road and the trees? Trees are leaning, some of them at sixty degrees, and it's very dangerous. I talked to Mr. Herbig before, and he said that this has come up before, but no decision has been made. I was thinking about this, and I thought, maybe if the city would have some kind of agreement with the owners of these trees, whoever that is, that if they gave the city, or county, or whoever permission, could the city or the county come in and take care of those trees that are really a danger to the citizens? Thank you.
Nobody else has signed up to speak.
Mr. D., thank you very much for your comments. I do suggest that you, um, thank you for the comments on the street trees, and I think, City Manager, can you clarify responsibility?
Yeah, I believe those trees are on private property, and we've sent letters to those property owners letting them know that they are responsible for those trees.
Senator, thank you for your comments. I know Ms. Bent was working on the SEPA, and I believe she's got, she sent her comments off to State Parks, and she is pursuing the environmental impact statement, full D.I.S. Next item on the agenda is this agenda.
So moved.
In a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item on the agenda is plastic bag reduction policy. Mr. Park? Management intern. Wear that over, you did a nice job, thank you. So, one second, before you get started, I know Debbie's saying that this is important to her, I know she's going to be here probably in fifteen minutes. Is there any objection to delaying this until she gets here? And we'll go to the hangar, study?
I'm okay.
Everybody okay with that? Sorry about that, we're gonna, we're gonna go with the hangar study first. This is your first time in front of us, we want to make sure that we keep you here for a while. We don't want you getting out too early or too easy.
Can you hear me? Okay, there we go. Good evening, Mayor Baker and Council, thank you for having me this evening. So, as I'm sure you all know by now, the hangar has been quite the success in our community. We've received an overwhelming response since we opened doors last summer, and so I'm here this evening to just provide an update about how the building's being used, and trends that we're starting to see, and then give you a little bit of information about what we're looking forward to in the next six months and the next year. And then, if you have questions as I go along, please feel free to ask, I'm happy to answer them. So, tonight I'll be going over a couple of things. I'll be talking about programming, so I'll provide an update on reservations, how people are using the space. I'll talk a little bit about how we've been promoting the space, and the result of some of those promotions, and talk about some of the tools that we're currently using. And then I'll talk about next steps. So, I'll lay out a couple of things that we're looking forward to, and some goals that we've set for ourselves for the next year. Great, so the first thing I'll talk about is programming. So, we officially opened the hangar to the public on August seventh of 2017, and we started taking reservations on October twenty-fifth. So, during that gap, we were setting up a website that would hold the application, that we take reservations through. And during that time, we saw most folks using the space to connect with family or friends, play board games, grab a cup of coffee, meet with clients. And we didn't start seeing formal reservations until after we started accepting them in October. So, the hangar is open Monday through Saturday from six AM to eight PM, and on Sundays from seven AM to six PM. And we take reservations for a majority of that time. And this last spring, we started to notice a large uptick in reservations. There was a point where we were booked out three-and-a-half weeks. And we started to receive feedback from the community that they wanted dedicated time when they knew that they could go to the hangar and use the space without a reservation taking place, or an event going on. And so, we worked closely with the community, as well as with Diva Espresso, to choose a set number of hours for each day of the week, which we've set Monday through Saturday from ten AM to one PM, and on Sundays all day. And this is just dedicated time for the public to use the hangar for activities like studying, or working, or hanging out with friends, without fear of being in competition of events going on in the larger open space. So, it's important to note that these numbers were polled several weeks ago, but since we opened reservations up to the public, we've received five hundred and eighty reservation requests. So, we've had two hundred and forty-one individual people make those requests. And so, those are folks who have specifically gone onto the website and submitted some sort of request for a reservation. And that's averaging out to about twenty requests a week. Obviously, that number was quite a bit lower when we started, and then it's beginning to increase quite dramatically as we get close to summer. It's also kind of exciting to note that if we continue on this track, we will have hit a thousand reservation requests by the time our anniversary rolls around on October twenty-fifth, 2018. So, looking at, you know, what we have so far, so we've received, as I mentioned, five hundred and eighty total reservation requests. Three hundred and ninety-two of those have been confirmed, so they have either resulted in a past reservation or a future one. Of those five hundred and eighty that we've received, a hundred and fifty of those eventually were canceled by the client. And it's, I think, really important to note that a large majority of this particular number was a reoccurring Zumba class. The instructor decided after a few classes that it was more appropriate to move that kind of activity to a more traditional setting like a gym, and so she canceled her classes. And then, some of the others that cancellations we've gotten are from people who no longer are going to hold their meeting, or who need a slightly different space. And then, of the five hundred and eighty we've received, thirty-eight of those we declined. So, again, in this situation, there was a large number of requests by one particular group. It was by a political group that was looking to hold rallies in the hangar, and per our facility use policy, that's not something that we allow. But we worked with them to help them find another venue to hold their reservation in. Some of the other requests that we've declined are things like dog-related events. We've had a couple of requests for people to sell their products in the hangar. And as I'm sure some of you might remember, we did a pop-up shop pilot program at the end of 2017, and it was quite successful. And we've worked with Jennifer Lawson, who put on that pop-up shop program, to glean insight and just some information about her best practices, and are hoping to make a more formal program go live at the end of this year. So, we've been in communication with the folks that we declined those requests from, and are just keeping them up to date on when that application goes live. So, looking at past reservations, we've had three hundred and fifteen reservations already take place in the hangar. So, seventy percent of these have taken place in the Beaver Room, so it's the small conference room with the closing doors. And thirty percent have taken place in the Otter Room. So, looking forward, we take reservations up to six months in advance. And again, these numbers are really similar. We have about seventy percent that have requested the Beaver Room, and about thirty percent who have requested the Otter Room. So, we're seeing the space being used in a wide variety of ways. As you can see, most of the use is through business meetings and club meetings, so a lot of Girl Scout and Boy Scout groups are now coming in. Other is something that I wanted to point out. We ask when people make reservations to let us know how they're using the space. And other has obviously resulted in a large number. So, looking at the data a little more closely, these are things like birthday parties, yoga classes, Tai Chi get-togethers, so sort of a variety of things that don't necessarily fall into the other categories. And as you can also see, this data's pretty in line with that seventy-thirty number that we're looking at. So, events or reservations that would typically take place in a smaller, more intimate setting are, you know, much larger, which is what we're seeing with the Beaver Room. And larger events like community events or musical performances, we're seeing less of those, and so those are taking place in the Otter Room. So, last summer, Leslie Harris came to you all with a business plan for the hangar, and in that business plan was a section about programming. We set a goal for ourselves to have five different types of programming in the hangar. And so, one of those types of programming was city organized events. So, last summer, we began a new Movies at the Square series in the town square, and we held six outdoor family-friendly movies before the building had even opened. And we had about sixteen hundred people come out to those events, and they were quite popular and really well-received by the community. So, we'll be holding four this year, so that, we're condensing it so we don't have to compete with the sunlight so much. And we'll be holding educational and fun activities in the hangar before the movies take place. Last year, we also held the Y of Kenmore Summer Party. We had a little over a thousand people in attendance, and this was also in conjunction with the grand opening of the building. And we are looking forward to holding this event again this year, in conjunction with our twentieth anniversary celebration. We also held the Holiday Market portion of the Tree Lighting Festival in the hangar this year. We featured seven local artists and business owners, and they sold everything from jewelry to T-shirts. And we, it was, we had received quite a few requests, so we'll be sort of reorganizing how we run that next year. Another goal that we set for ourselves was to have community-based or nonprofit events take place. And one of the first events that took place in the town square was an event called Fighting Hunger at the Hangar, and this was run by a local group called Student Music Initiatives. Student Music Initiatives is a nonprofit run by Inglemore High School students, and they play music to raise money for certain nonprofits in the community. And last year, they chose the YMCA Summer Lunch Program, and they were successful in raising a thousand dollars at that event. We are also working quite closely with the Boy Scout Troop Five Eighty-Two. So, they came to us right after the building opened last year and requested to hold a blood drive in the hangar. And we were a little bit skeptical at first, to be really honest, and we decided to try it out. So, as you can see, they work with Bloodworks directly, and Bloodworks screens people in the Beaver Room, and then members of the community can give blood in the Otter Room. And they got surprisingly a positive response, and have decided to come back to the hangar for three more blood drives this year. And last Friday, we received an email from Bloodworks, letting us know that they would like to move all of their blood drives from North Shore Utility District to the hangar permanently. So, next year, they will be doing six blood drives. They're finding that their walk-up rates are increasing exponentially like they'd never imagined. So, we're really excited to hear that. We're excited that the community is connecting them in ways, in ways that they never expected. So, we'll be continuing to keep a close eye on those. Another great example of a community-based event is brought to us by the North Shore School District. So, the school district partnered with several local psychologists and counselors to hold a screening of the film called Anxiety, and it talks about teenage anxieties, and things that they're dealing with as they head towards their college years. And so, they held a screening for about fifty parents, and then several of the counselors were on a panel to answer questions and give advice to parents. We also wanted to encourage individual or group activities in the hangar. And so, a great example of this is that we were approached by a local violin teacher who wanted to hold his student's recital in the Otter Room. So, as you can see, the kids dressed up in their Halloween costumes and performed. They had about seventy parents in attendance, and they'll be holding their end-of-the-school-year "Take Me Out to the Ballgame" themed recital this Saturday. We're also seeing groups like Kenmore Rock Painting Parties, and library events, and other community groups coming out to put on public programming in the space. So, that's been really exciting to see take off, and it's just been, it's been exciting to see what new things come in the space.
Kenmore, so, rock painting, what's that?
So, there's a group that gets together about once a month, and they do exactly that. They paint rocks with certain messages or pictures on them, and then they hide them in parks throughout the city.
Wow, cool, sounds like a love note to me.
Yes, that it is. And then, obviously, we expect an impromptu gathering. So, if you walk into the hangar on any given day of the week when a reservation isn't taking place, just about every table is full. There are people who are, instead of working from home, they're now working from the hangar. There are people playing board games, hanging out with friends. If you walk in at two o'clock on any day of the week, there's quite a few students who are now studying in there, or doing their study groups in there. And this is where we have a little bit of room for growth. So, one of the goals we set for, goals we set for ourselves was to have fee-based classes or events in the hangar. And so, as I mentioned, last fall, we had a pop-up shop pilot program, and we're hoping to implement that on a more permanent basis towards the end of this year. And we are also working with a local nonprofit to put on photography and fashion classes for teenagers in the space, and they'll charge a small fee for teenagers to be able to access that programming. And one thing that we're just keeping a very careful eye on is typically, we don't allow community members to charge for programming in the space. But if they do, we go through a process of making sure that it is not going to cause a barrier for access. We want this to be, we want the building and both the programming side to be accessible. So, next I want to talk a little bit about the makeup of the users of the space. So, this number has swayed back and forth a little bit, so it's something that we certainly want to just keep an eye on. At the moment, fifty-eight percent of the people who request a reservation at the hangar are residents of Kenmore, and forty-two percent are non-residents. So, we're receiving requests as far north as Muckeltoe, as far south as Burien, and then from Shoreline to Redmond. So, it's covering quite a wide area. I want to talk a little bit about staffing. So, on any given day of the week, we have two to three staff members who are working on hangar-related tasks. So, as far as reservation and website management goes, as well as communications with the public, I am the number-one point person at the city to manage those things. So, thirty percent of my daily workload is spent on answering questions from the public, accepting reservation requests, updating the website so that information and content is up to date, placing new schedules over at the hangar, updated schedules, conducting site visits, ordering furniture. So, a little bit of everything to make sure that that experience stays great, and that people continue to come back. And then, we have four Public Works maintenance team members who also work on the hangar, and they conduct maintenance tasks, as well as set up for reservations. So, they bring furniture out of storage, or set up the projector or monitor systems over there. So, we have two morning staff who are also openers, and approximately ten to twenty percent of their daily workload is being spent on hangar-related tasks. And then, we have two afternoon staff and closers, and approximately forty to fifty percent of their daily workload is being spent on the hangar. So, next I want to talk a little bit about some of the marketing that we're doing, some of the tools that we're using. So, I think what's really exciting to note about the hangar is we really have done very little to promote the space. And that sounds funny, because our numbers and the response that we're seeing is, has been really wonderful. And so, right after the building opened, we did a few social media posts. We took out an ad on the back of the Bothell Kenmore Reporter. We've had a couple of really wonderful features in the Seattle Times and local parenting blogs. And that is about all of the work that we have done, which is pretty amazing. We're finding that word of mouth is really what is selling this building. We're seeing people talk about it on Google reviews. We're seeing people talk about it on Yelp. We've got communities like Woodinville, and Bothell, and Kirkland, people are talking about it in their own community pages. So, it's been really interesting and really fascinating to watch how this building has blossomed, and how it's grown by word of mouth. To be fair, we do have a website, it's kenmorehangar.com, and this is really a home for people to learn a little bit about the building, and then make reservations. And our hope is that over time, this website will be able to transition to something that has a lot more information about downtown Kenmore, about our new food truck series over the summer, and then talk, our hope is to get to a point where we can have an updated calendar of events. So, so far, we've had a little over ten thousand website visits since the site went live, and that number's increased by about a thousand in the last two weeks since these numbers were polled. We also are, we also set a goal for ourselves that we wanted this website to be really easy to use, and easily accessible by mobile. So, on average, worldwide, websites are visited on a mobile device at about fifty-two point two percent, and we're right in line with that. Fifty-two percent of our visits to our website are done via mobile device. So, it's something that I'm constantly keeping an eye on to make sure that it's user-friendly, and that it's easy to access the information that people are going to need to access. So, now I just want to talk about next steps. So, we're currently in the process of recruiting several hangar ambassadors. And so, these would be volunteers that greet visitors as they enter the building, they can answer questions, and keep an eye on the space. I had, I was fortunate to have a chance to visit Pibus Market in Wenatchee a few months ago, and their architect is the same architect that worked on the hangar, and their volunteer coordinator has just been a wonderful asset to our team. She's been providing information about how they manage their volunteers, and talking a little bit about their programming in that space. And so, we've worked one-on-one with them to try to develop our own program. And so, our hope is to have community members be faces of the hangar, and really take ownership of that. And our hope is to have that in place here in the next few weeks. We're also looking forward to branding. We have a really wonderful story to tell, and a really special story to tell. And it's hard to take twenty years of history and work behind that, and put it into one or two sentences. So, our hope is to bring on a team that can help us tell that story in a concise way, and hopefully put together some imagery that we can use for promotion when we're ready to start doing some official promoting, as well as create some merchandise that can be sold at the hangar, hopefully by our hangar ambassador volunteers. And then, the last thing that we're starting to look at is fees. So, given the increasing number of non-resident users of the hangar, we would really appreciate city council's feedback and guidance on whether or not you would like us to explore a non-resident fee for reservations at the hangar. We realize that this building was paid for by the citizens of Kenmore, and we also recognize the value that visitors bring when they come to the hangar. You know, coming back to the point about word of mouth, and, you know, those folks are also spending money at local businesses and helping support Kenmore as it is. So, this is certainly not a dis- So this is certainly not a decision that we're asking from you on the spot. If you would like information, more information, we can certainly have that conversation at a later date and bring more data to you. But we would just appreciate your guidance on whether that's something you would like us to pursue in general. And with that, again, I appreciate your time tonight. And please let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. Great report. Let me ask you a question on the fee issue.
Sure.
Can you tell me, because I'm not really in favor of looking at fees at this point. But I would like to know, are there specific users that are using it multiple times that maybe if there was a restriction on how many times in a month or in a particular period that could be implemented? Would that help free up a little space?
Yeah, that's a good question. So at the moment, we're limiting users, any user, whether resident or non-resident, to one use a week. Occasionally, if, you know, for some reason, they needed it on a Saturday and then a Tuesday, we're being flexible with that. But at the moment, we're limiting it to one use per group or individual per week. And you know, maybe it's, we could always look at maybe we limit it more than that for non-residents. But that's not something that we've considered yet.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to let you know, I did reserve it a few months ago. And I found it to be a really easy and very accommodating process.
Good, happy to hear that.
Councilmember Curtis.
It seems like the fee discussion would relate partially to how far out people are scheduling. So about how far is that at this point?
People are scheduling, they can schedule up to six months in advance. I got a request this morning for December fifteenth. So we're already seeing reservations out that far.
And then kind of a related question, are you getting any feedback that people can't get the times or the spots they're looking for?
Yeah, so we haven't received a ton of feedback. So in the spring, when we were booked out about three and a half weeks, there was certainly some negative feedback to that. At the moment, we're booked out about a half a week. And so it's calmed down a little bit at this point. I think people are also, it's been a process, people getting used to how it works and that they do sometimes need to make their reservations, you know, quite far in advance. For example, as you and I have had this conversation, Saturdays are now booked out through the middle of August. So you know, we're keeping an eye on how far out we're being booked. But right now, it seems to be leveling out a little bit compared to the spring.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniski.
It's a great report. Thank you. I guess I'm not quite to the point where I'd want to charge fees. I think that we're still trying to get the interest and get the excitement and having people tell our stories and getting our story out with different cities. So I can see where that may come in, but I don't think I'm quite there yet.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Marshall.
Is there a cost for the graphic designer? Or is that an existing service or existing contract the city has? And then what we anticipating the products of the graphic designer to be? And then, sorry, unrelated question, what were the political organizations that were prohibited by our contract?
Sure, good questions. So it would be an additional cost for a designer. I'm not sure what that number is. We've began to just look at our options locally. And we're having this conversation across the board for other reasons as well. So unfortunately, I don't have an exact number for you. But it's certainly something as we move along that we could provide. And as far as the type of merchandise, so we've been looking at what other similar community centers or public spaces look like. And frequent things that we see are things like t-shirts or postcards, coffee cups. So what we envision are pieces that people would use in the space or use outside of the space to help promote it. And there's not quite a vision for that. We're really in the beginning stages of what that would look like. Pibus Market in Wenatchee does that quite well. And they use that money to help fund programming. They now do a Pibus Market University. And the money goes into their nonprofit. And they can put on free public programming multiple times a week. So the vision would be, you know, whatever funds likely came from that, we would be able to start putting on some more formal programming. And then please remind me of your last question.
That was the political clauses of the agreement. If there were certain types of political action committees perhaps that weren't allowed. And then I understood that the portion open to the general public without reservation was just a open public forum for First Amendment purposes anyway.
Yeah, so I believe the group was called Resist, Resist Seattle. And so their main cause is speaking out against Republicans and Trump. And our facility use policy does state. And we've worked closely with our attorney on making sure that we're not restricting people from using the space who have a right to use it. And typically, the guidelines we've been given is that if both sides are present, that opens up a larger conversation. But because both sides were not present in that case and wouldn't be present, and it was going to be a rally where they were encouraging people to protest, we agreed as a team that that wasn't the right fit for the building.
Do you have a general part, or a specific part, I'm sorry, part of the agreement that specifies those requirements for any group, regardless of, you know, its political stance? Is there some specific language in the contract that governs a situation like that?
Yeah, so the facility use policy that we, that council voted in last summer, we have it on the website. We have both a condensed version for people who won't read through it. And then we have the full version posted. And people who reserve space in the hangar are also required to read that and select that they've read it when they make a reservation. So that group should have read those rules before they made their request.
Well, thank you. I'll be sure to reread the contract.
No.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Great report. And yeah, so similar issue to Joe on the branding side. I'm hoping, and I think maybe this is the case you kind of alluded to, that you're looking at working with the designer and logos and things like that in the context of the larger city work around that. Yeah, so it's all part of a piece. And I guess maybe I'm in the minority. But I would be at least curious about the fees that are imposed in other similar kinds of places. I'm thinking third-place books. And if there's any differentiation between nonprofits and other groups. And just sort of what is the landscape around us? Because I guess I do feel like these rooms are of value. And when, and that, you know, should at least have the information.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate everything you put together here. I've got a few different questions really quickly. So when you said we're condensing the movies down, when do they start and when do we see a lineup? Because I loved those last year.
Yeah, yeah.
In fact, I found myself in the picture of the people watching.
Oh, good.
Life of Pets. I was like, oh, there I am.
Good. We will start them on June eleventh. They'll be every other Wednesday. And I just got the proof for the poster in my inbox before I walked into this meeting. So we should make that available to the public tomorrow morning.
Awesome.
July eleventh is when they begin. And I actually have the lineup for you, although not the dates. We'll be doing Ferdinand for our first movie. Then we'll be doing Coco, The Greatest Showman. And then our last one will be Black Panther.
We should be providing Kleenex for Coco.
I agree.
A couple of quick questions. In one of the earlier slides, it said two hundred and forty-one individual users of the reservation system. But then later on, you were showing the residents versus non-residents. I did some quick math and it came up to three hundred and ninety-two different users. Is there a discrepancy there? Am I just, yeah, this is?
Oh, you are correct. So these are, there we go. So this number is being pulled from individual reservations, not from users. So that information could probably be clarified a little bit better. Yeah, and I'm happy to grab those numbers. And I can send an update to council tomorrow.
Where are food trucks now setting up now that the seaplane is going up?
Yeah, so for events that'll take place at the hangar, like the movies, our hope is to use the diagonal parking in front of the seaplane restaurant until it's open. Next year, we're going to have to reevaluate that a little bit. And then it might be that we don't bring out food trucks. Maybe we really partner with Seaplane Restaurant as well as Diva to have them be the providers of food. But for this year, we'll be putting them in the diagonal parking or directly in the parking lot so that they're visible to the public.
Okay. And then to the subject of fees, I don't, I'm not actually knee-jerk kind of against looking at fees for non-residents. Because as Councilmember Shrubnik says, you know, we spent a considerable amount of city funds to build this. And those were taxpayer funds from the people of Kenmore. We should be making sure that those folks have access. I'd like to hear, before we make the decision, I'd like to hear more information about other local, similar sorts of places and what the fee structure might be in other places. And also, you know, one thing we might do is for non-residents, we might just, I don't know, maybe make there be a week or a few days where the reservation kind of sits in limbo to see if somebody else needs it that's a resident in the next couple of days. And then, I don't know, I just think there might be other ways to go about this to make sure that we're prioritizing Kenmore residents without shutting people out completely. Because I want to see it used as much as possible. I don't want to drive people away. But I also don't want Kenmore residents getting forced out by, you know, a Bothell group that's coming in to talk about gardening or something. I mean, nothing against any of those folks. But if we have to prioritize, I'd much rather see Kenmore folks giving the reservations.
Absolutely. And I think it's important to note that, you know, we don't want to implement fees just to implement fees. The ultimate goal is to prioritize that residents can use the space. So that's great feedback.
Yeah, it's not about making money. I mean, I imagine whatever we would charge would be nominal.
Yeah, exactly.
But I think we need a little bit more information.
Absolutely.
If I can just add a couple of things.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think you can call this a success story. You, as a council, had a vision for creating that downtown sense of place and establishing a strategic investment area in your downtown plan. And this right here was it. And it's paying off. I think we are creating a downtown. And I'm using the word creating, not even revitalization. I think the city of Kenmore incorporated pretty late in the game compared to other cities and didn't really have a downtown to speak of. But the city took matters into its own hands and assembled land and sold it back to the private sector on conditions of redevelopment and kept the prime corner for that public gathering space. You saw the demand out there. You saw the need. And you saw the need for a year-round gathering space. So there are town greens and town squares out there in other cities. But in our climate, those are only good for, what, four months out of the year? And you, as a council, wanted to create that year-round gathering space. And it was a bit of a risk because what we just created over here is, it's a new idea. I can't think of another city that has quite what we have over here. And, but you knew there was a need. And so you took that leap of faith and made it happen. And it's paying off. The hangar is very well-used, as Shelby has just shown you with data. But if you go in there on any given afternoon, you can see that there's plenty of people using and enjoying the space. Part of the recipe for this was to have a retail tenant to occupy a portion of the space. So the hangar is forty-six hundred square feet. And about eleven hundred square feet of that is occupied by our retailer, Diva Espresso. And they're doing well. Their revenues are going up faster than they had anticipated. And they're very glad they're here. They said that of all their locations, they have about seven locations. We're the first location outside of the city of Seattle for them. But of all their locations, they say that this location does by far the best when the weather's nice. So a lot of their other locations don't fluctuate as much with the weather. But they said ours do. So when it's sunny and the big audacious door is open, they definitely see a spike in their business. So anyway, so I just wanted to kind of give you that bigger picture of what you were hoping for, for your downtown. And I think your vision is on its way to becoming a reality.
Councilmember Curtis.
So I have one last comment on the arrangement of the tables.
Sure.
So a lot of time when I go in there, there might be one or two people at a large table. And I know there's a few small tables that have appeared. I think we could use more small tables.
I agree with you. That's something that we're hoping to implement before the end of June. We're noticing the same thing, that one or two people sit at the large tables. We've also started to notice that people are pulling apart the tables in the Beaver Room more now than ever before to make their own little pods. And so that's been interesting to see, that people are realizing that's a flexible workspace. So we are definitely going to be bringing in some more tables here in the next few weeks.
Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, I have one last question. With the seaplane opening in a few months here, will that change anything as far as, is there any coordination going on with them on any, whether it's sponsoring any events in the plaza or just any process change because of that?
Yeah, that's a good question. So our hope is to work with them as a partner. We certainly want it to be a really wonderful relationship from the get-go. I know, I believe, if I understand correctly, in their contract, that they'll have an outdoor patio space. And so we'll work with them to make sure that if they've got events going on, we don't have events going on and vice versa, and just try to collaborate on those as much as possible. But outside of that, I don't believe anything operationally is going to change a whole lot.
To add to that, we're in the finishing touches on completing the operational agreement on that overlap space. So part of the purchase and sale agreement allows them to use a small portion of the town green for outdoor seating. And we've gone back and forth on the rules that both parties need to abide by when it comes to that. And those rules and that agreement on that overlap space should be coming to you at a council meeting in the near future. So the seaplane restaurant, they hope to be open for business in September. So that's good news. And then the building, the pad or the patchy area of grass in between the hangar and the link, they plan to come in for building permits here in the near future. And they want to get going on that mixed-use building probably in the fall.
Any other questions, comments?
All right, well, I want to thank you for the presentation, Shelby. That was great. Rob, I still remember the first time you brought up this idea for the hangar. We had been talking about the town square. And I remember when you came to us with that idea. And I was not sure how this was going to pan out. But I think I speak for everybody when I say that it's great. It's a huge asset to the community. And I get random people when I'm out talking to other council members from Woodinville or Shoreline who bring it up. So, great job.
Yeah, and I also want to give kudos to Shelby. She has done an amazing job. She's worked so hard, and we couldn't have done it without her. We have this, at the beginning, we had this small little team we called the Hangar and Town Square Team. And we met in that room to come up with a plan and implement all the details. And it's amazing, all the what-ifs and all the little details you have to think of and figure out. We called that room for a time the Hangar War Room. And you might remember, there was all those sheets and everything on the walls. But Shelby was, she really became the quarterback of that team. And she's done a great job making it all happen. So thank you, Shelby.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you again for having me this evening.
Thank you. Next up, we're going to have a plastic bag reduction policy discussion. Jack Rehert, our management intern, is going to present that. Thank you again for your flexibility, Jack.
Good to be up here again. Good evening, council. I'll be talking about a potential plastic bag reduction policy. I'll be talking about the problems, the effectiveness of other policies, and comparing some of the other options out there. And then ultimately, giving you the opportunity to decide whether to go forward with a policy and what that will look like. So to start out, the problem, the average American family uses fifteen hundred plastic bags a year. And only one percent of those are recycled. And the ones that are not recycled are used for an average of twelve minutes, basically the time that it takes to take groceries home. And the other fourteen hundred and eighty-five per family that are not recycled end up in landfills, fences, trees, storm drains, the ocean. There's been a lot of research done lately on the ocean. And there's still a lot unknown about the effects that they had, that plastic bags have in the ocean. But they're all over the ocean. And they have a really damaging effect on the species that are in the ocean. And people estimate the size of the garbage patch, and it's astronomical. So to talk about... So to talk about ordinances that are being passed on plastic bags, there are now ordinances in 18 Washington jurisdictions to ban plastic bags. More than 90 California jurisdictions have adopted ordinances, and then hundreds of U.S. cities. Also in California, the first statewide ban passed in 2016. Zero Waste Washington, I'll talk about them throughout this report. Zero Waste Washington is a nonprofit organization that is focused on responsible producing, consuming, and recycling, and they're currently working with 16 Washington jurisdictions toward adopting a policy. And so it's something that's kind of come in a wave these last couple of years. There was several years where policies weren't being passed, but again, it's become really popular, and the reasons for that is, I think, because studies have started to show more and more the problems and the results of plastic bag policies, as well as kind of the fine-tuning of the policies, has made those attractive as they find out what's best. To talk a little bit about the effectiveness of some of the policies that have been passed, so San Jose, California, they banned plastic bags in 2011. They found the next year a 62% reduction in plastic bags in storm drains, a 59% reduction in the street, and I should also mention a 60% reduction in plastic bags in rivers and streams in San Jose. Thurston County, they passed in 2014 a plastic bag ban, and they found six months later in a survey of 7,300 citizens, that 62% reduction in citizens who use plastic bags and a 33% increase in reusable bags. The Coastal Cleanup Day, that's an international day where different states and countries participate in cleaning up the coast. And in California's cleanup in 2017, this is the year after they passed their ordinance, plastic bags made up only 3% of the litter that they cleaned up, whereas seven years earlier, before any, before the state and many of the cities had passed ordinances, plastic bags made up 7% of the litter. So more than half of the total makeup of litter, they halved from 2010 to 2017. So that's a little bit about the effectiveness of policies. I want to talk about the drawbacks because the solution isn't simple. It's not just you switch from plastic to paper and everything is solved because there's a study that the United Kingdom, the United Kingdom's Environment Agency conducted in 2011 to show the environmental production cost of different kinds of bags. And they found, and there's more research about this in the appendices that I gave you, but they found that paper bags have four times the environmental production cost as plastic bags that you get from the grocery store. And those things, the study takes things into account such as consumption of non-renewable resources, consumption of water, emission of greenhouse gases, atmospheric acidification, formation of photochemical oxidants, eutrophication of water, production of solid waste, and risk of littering. So all those things considered, as I mentioned, paper bags have four times the environmental production cost. And then reusable bags, such as heavier-duty plastic or cotton bags, much higher. We'll show a table in the next slide. But as we talk about that, keep in mind, despite their production cost, paper bags do have some great advantages compared to plastic bags. They decompose quickly, whereas scientists think that the plastic bags from the grocery stores, they range from saying either 500 years to never that they decompose. Paper bags are recycled more easily and much more often than plastic bags. Paper bags are produced from a renewable resource, whereas plastic bags come from petroleum. And used enough, reusable bags, which have a much higher production cost, if you use them enough, they compensate for that production cost. And that's the hope, that you reuse reusable bags enough to make up for their high environmental cost. So with that in mind, here's a table that shows a comparison of how many times you would have to reuse different bags to make up for how much more it costs to produce them than plastic bags. So again, this takes all those environmental factors into account. And if you look across the top, you have your classic grocery bag, the HDP bag. That's just what you get when you go to Safeway and you check out. It's called a T-shirt bag often, it's got those straps over the top. So you can see in the first column, if it's never used twice, if it's just used once, taken home for the groceries and then thrown out, thrown away, paper bag would need to be used three times to become better for the environment. A light plastic reusable bag, four times, heavy plastic reusable bag, 11 times, and a cotton bag, 131 times. Maybe that will stand out to you as you look at this chart, how much more costly a cotton bag is than the other kinds of reusable bags. The other kinds of reusable bags, hopefully you can imagine somebody purchasing one of those and using those throughout the year, and they'll make up for their environmental cost if used enough. Cotton bags you'd have to use for an awfully long time. So I want to talk about options for an ordinance based on things that other jurisdictions have done. The first option is the most common one passed in the state of Washington recently, and what it is, is a plastic ban. And when we say ban, it's banning retailers from providing plastic bags. And so there's a plastic ban, they won't provide a plastic bag, but they will charge a pass-through fee if you need to use paper bags. You've seen this if you've shopped at Safeway in Kirkland or other cities that have a similar policy. That pass-through fee in Washington is typically at no less than five cents, is what their policy stipulate, and then the stores, if they want to, can ask for even more than that. But no less than five cents, and the reason why is because that helps the stores to recoup their costs for paper bags, and hopefully as well, it nudges customers towards using reusable bags in the future. The second option is a plastic ban and no fee for paper bags. This was kind of an older type of ordinance that was passed more around 2006 to 2010. It's something that Edmonds still has in place and a couple of other cities in Washington. With this one, it can be attractive to customers, but retailers don't recoup their costs for paper bags, and also there's no nudge towards reusable bags because you know, the store will provide me with something. The third type is a ban on all single-use carryout bags. This is something that has been used, adopted in Austin, Texas. It's one of a kind, and they won't provide any kind of bag there. So if you want to shop there, you either need to bring a reusable bag or carry things in your arms. And as you can imagine, that cuts down on the waste of plastic and paper bags, but a couple of effects of that, if there are visitors in the city, they won't know what to expect, and they'll get to a store and not be able to carry their things, and that may dissuade them from shopping in Austin. And then as well, there's a, there's kind of a debate about the production costs of all the reusable bags that as an effect were produced in Austin at the time, just huge environmental cost from producing all of those. And all of those reusable bags will need to be used and used again to make up for that. The fourth option, this is one that is passed in New York City. It's a fee on all single-use carryout bags, so they'll provide plastic or paper. What they do in New York City is 10 cents for a plastic bag and 5 cents for a paper So again, here are the four options listed. The first one is the one recommended by Zero Waste Washington. The second one is an older model that no recent city has passed, and the third and fourth are more rigid and kind of newer models you see in Austin and New York City. So let's talk a little bit about potential exemptions if you do choose to pass a paper bag ordinance. Some of the common exemptions you see, so 2.25 millimeters is the cutoff for a plastic bag, over which it becomes a reusable bag by definition and under which it's a single-use carryout bag. Using this cutoff as an exemption, stores can assure that bags can be used again and that they're not just thick plastic bags that stores can say, here's a, here's a plastic bag that's not the same as the one that we used to provide. So you can decide whether or not you would like that to be the cutoff here as well should an ordinance pass. Specialty bags, such as the ones that you find within the store for bulk foods, produce, meats, those are typically exempted, so stores can continue to provide those in most cases of ordinances. You'll still see plastic bags in the back of the store in Kirkland and other cities that have banned plastic bags at the checkout area. And then also takeout bags for prepared food, like laundry bags, restaurant bags, newspaper bags, pet waste bags, bags for items where dampness could be an issue, such as flowers and garbage bags. So a lot of retailers can continue to use their plastic bags with this exemption. It's more for, again, that typical plastic bag that you see at grocery stores that they give at checkout. Small stores, so this is an interesting thing. Some cities have decided that they will exempt stores based on size, so over a certain square footage are required to ban plastic bags and under they are not. As well, there are cities that have, such as Kirkland, they have, there's a code, a Northwest Retail Alliance code that certain kinds of stores have, and they've decided that only certain coded stores this policy would apply to. For example, a gasoline station would be one type of code and a supermarket would be another, and in Kirkland, for instance, a supermarket and a gas station codes, the policy applies to both of those. One more example, to be brief, one more example, some do it by revenue. If a store brings in a certain amount of revenue annually, they're required to comply. Compostable bags is another potential exemption, although compostable bags are usually used in grocery stores for produce or items in the back where they could be exempted anyway by a specialty bag exemption. Zero Waste Washington said they wouldn't typically be provided at checkout because it would be difficult to, they said they're kind of too lightweight and too fragile to carry your typical groceries. However, should the council decide in a potential ordinance, compostable bags could be given out at checkout. And then finally, there's an exemption on low-income program customers in Midey ordinances from the pass-through charge. So if a low-income customer pays with an electronic voucher that's part of the WIC program, or TANF, or SNAP, programs like that, they're exempted from the pass-through charge. That's common, and that's also something that the council could choose to do. A few other details. Compliance date. Most cities that have adopted this type of ordinance have provided between four months and one year to comply. They usually give notice out to businesses and tell them when the compliance date will be, and as I mentioned, it's typically four months to a year, more towards a year. There are a lot that have decided on 10 months. And also, we talked about small stores. There is a city or two in Washington that have decided that small stores should have longer to comply, in case it's harder for them to comply, 10 months longer, a year longer, for example. Enforcement. Zero Waste Washington recommends a really light-handed approach to enforcement. They said that there aren't a lot of issues with compliance, but usually what happens is citizens will notify the city that certain stores aren't complying, and usually with just a mailed notice or an in-person notice and a grace period to come within compliance, usually that's all it takes for stores to comply. And then it's something that catches on little by little. If this passes, stores start to see each other in the city comply with this, and typically there isn't an issue with that. The name of the policy I want to talk about a little bit. In the past, a lot of the ordinances have been called things like plastic bag reduction or plastic bag ban, and Zero Waste Washington and other cities recently have decided that a name more like the reusable bag policy or bring-your-own-bag policy is more fitting because it encourages the right behavior, which is to use reusable bags. And so the language on that could be something that would be important to the council. And then finally, notifying retailers and citizens. So a good example has been provided by Kirkland. I'll show you on this next slide. This is a visual guide that Kirkland gave to all businesses to post outside of their store so that when customers came, they could see, you know, this is months in advance of compliance, they could see this and know that in the future, what kinds of bags would be provided. This is really basic, it's really easy to look at. As well, Kirkland provided a big packet that they provided to all retailers, and in this information packet, it gets a lot more specific about what, which kinds of bags can be used, the 2.25-millimeter cutoff. So those are some materials as well that, should an ordinance be adopted here, that we could distribute and let citizens and businesses be aware. That's all I have for you. What questions do you have?
Questions? Councilmember Marshall?
So the Kirkland example had a prepared food in the graphic mentioned. Does that mean restaurants would exempt under a typical ordinance or recommended ordinance?
That's correct. That's how it is in Kirkland and in the other cities in Washington that I've seen, restaurants are exempted.
Councilmember Schumacher?
I have a question, but I, this presentation was good, and the supplemental materials were outstanding. The data was great, very thoughtful, very well-written, I just have to say that.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Danuski?
So I guess I'm, once again, it was a really good presentation, it did good work. I guess I'm pretty much in favor of, you know, I guess mostly of what Zero Waste Washington proposes. I would like a compostable, from my opinion, I would like those exempted. I don't know if we really need a small store exemption, though. I think they can get paper bags just as well as pretty much anybody these times. Definitely a low-income exemption, so, general thoughts.
Anyone else? Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I thought it was a very good presentation. Thanks for the additional supplemental info. I have a question, though, on the low-income exemption. Is there a reason why low-income people can't bring a reusable bag?
That's a good question. I would say no, but I guess we know, even from the cities that have passed, that just because they're encouraging reusable bag use, often customers show up without them. So again, this isn't an exemption from using a plastic bag, it's just an exemption from the 5-cent fee charge, but I understand the question and do feel that that doesn't, it doesn't nudge those types of customers toward purchasing a reusable bag or using a reusable bag.
Thank you.
I want to echo my colleagues and say that this was a great presentation, really appreciate all the thought that went into this. Couple of questions. So we spent some time talking about paper bags versus plastic bags as far as environmental concerns go. I know that when I go to the store, I usually get, you know, if I get something on a plastic bag, it's usually double-bagged, it carries, you know, this much stuff, whereas if I get paper bags, they're a little bigger, they can hold a bit more, and usually don't need two bags. Do any of the studies look at typical usage versus environmental cost, or is it just one bag to one bag?
It's one bag to one bag is what I've seen, but to your point, I read in an article as well that the paper bags, on average, can hold twice as many groceries as a plastic bag, one plastic bag.
Yeah, I know that when I go shopping and I come home with plastic bags, I end up with, you know, four bags in each hand, but if I get paper bags, it's usually one in each hand, and it's a little bit less wieldy, or unwieldy. So, just a question that popped up looking through this thing. In one of the charts, it mentions that Seattle banned green plastic bags?
Yeah.
Produce bags? What was Seattle's concern about the particular color of a produce bag?
Yeah, so something that's confusing about that is stores have been providing occasionally green bags for produce that are not compostable, and there's confusion that they are compostable because those are often also green or brown. And so Seattle decided, we don't want to give those, we don't want to give out green or brown bags that are not compostable because there's confusion at centers that compost bags.
Okay. And what are, in the chart with the different policy comparisons, it mentions that in the Zero Waste Washington kind of model, it mentions that they have other stipulations beyond bag thickness to define a reusable bag. Could you speak to those briefly?
Sure. So that's a good question, and the reason that there are other stipulations is because there's the question of, could a store meet that 2.25-millimeter bag exactly, so as kind of a loophole to give out plastic bags? And what Zero Waste Washington has recommended, and some cities stipulate, is that a reusable bag also be defined by a bag that could carry, I believe it's 20 bag also be defined by a bag that could carry, I believe it's 22 pounds of groceries at least 175 times for a certain number of feet.
Okay.
And so that's how they say this is a reusable bag.
Okay. Well, for what it's worth, I appreciate all this. I am generally in support of, of the Zero Waste Washington's model. I think the, I think banning the plastic bags makes a lot of sense with, with some exemptions. Five-cent charge minimum makes a lot of sense for the paper bags for folks to forget their bag. An exemption for low-income folks, I'm fine with that. I'd like to see us eventually move forward with this, so I appreciate that. Councilmember Curtis.
Question, are you needing a motion from us to prepare an ordinance?
We don't necessarily need an ordinance, but if there's general consensus on the council that you want us to move forward, we can do that. We would like some direction on timing, like when you would want us to bring an ordinance. And also, the advance notice you would want us to give the retailers, I think there's six months, there's a year, that type of thing.
I had a minor thought on that, if you're done.
Well, I'd be inclined to have the thing written while you still have your intern. And, and I'm inclined to, since he's done all this work, let's get him to a finished product so he can go home and say, "I did good work." And I'm inclined to give, you know, if 10 months is a pretty common lead time to go ahead and do that. And I'm not inclined to give the exemption for small businesses. They can charge more than five cents if they need to, to cover their costs. So I think that's the better way to do it.
Am I wrong in saying that I hear general consensus? Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I, I would go along with that. I still think if, if the point is to modify behavior, which I think it is, as well as come up with a more green solution, then I don't see a reason to have a low-income exemption. I think we're all motivated to do the right thing and if we're not, there's an economic incentive to do it. And I think when you eliminate that, you eliminate the need to change behavior.
Well, for what, I, you know, we're down one member right now, so I don't think we're going to get to the, to that exact point right now, but what if we have staff prepare generally what we're, what we have consensus on here and then we can make that adjustment when the ordinance comes before us? Does that work? All right.
Just a little bit about our intern, Jack Urquhart. No relation to the former sheriff. Jack's pursuing his master's of public administration degree at Brigham Young University and he's here for the summer. And little, little known fact about him is he used to be a sports writer and he even has some stuff published in Sports Illustrated, so pretty cool. And his in-laws are Kenmore residents, so that was part of why the internship made sense. And you even have your own little baby in the back, right?
That's right.
They're all in the back row back there and newborn baby.
Least experienced staff member and least experienced human in the room, same family.
Probably doesn't have an opinion on plastic bags yet.
Well, thank you for all your work, Jack. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up, item C, purchase and sale agreement for the city of Kenmore to potentially acquire the property located at 6646 Northeast 202nd Street in Kenmore. Rob Carlinsy, City Manager.
Deputy Mayor, City Council, before we start this discussion, as you know, Mayor Baker had to leave early and as he was leaving, he mentioned the possibility of him calling in and possibly voting on this particular item. However, the city attorney and I just checked the rules on that and Mr. Kasaguma, can you enlighten the council or remind the council of what those rules are when it comes to council members calling in and voting remotely?
Your rules provide that a council member can participate in the council meeting by remote telephone conferencing, provided the council member gives 24 hours' notice of that to the city clerk. However, another portion of your rules provides that the council by majority vote can temporarily waive any rule in your council rules, which would include the 24-hour notice requirement.
Also, in that rule, it states that the council member needs to be on a speakerphone where everybody can hear him or her and vice versa. So if you wanted to waive the 24-hour rule, I think we would need to scramble and set up a speakerphone or take your chances with my cellphone.
Cellphone and microphone.
Yeah, so totally your call on how you want to proceed with that.
Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow Mayor Baker to call in.
So moved?
Yes.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, we'll just do this by, what's the word I'm looking for?
Do you want me to do a roll call vote?
Yeah, let's do a roll call.
Okay. Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Schubnick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Excuse me.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Passed.
So have the staff want to proceed?
Well, we could, I could put my phone up next to the microphone and see how that works.
Let's give it a try.
Hey, Mayor Baker. We have you here on speakerphone at the Kenmore City Council meeting. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you fine.
Okay, and can everybody here hear the mayor okay?
Yes.
Yeah. Audience, yes, okay. All right, so we are going to include you in this meeting. The council just voted to waive the rules to allow you to be present via telephone and also to vote via telephone.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Okay, yes. So as you know, or as I've recently informed you, we've been in negotiations and discussions with the City of Lake Forest Park for quite some time on the provision of public works services to the city of Kenmore. And for quite some time, we've been seeing that we, we may, we may need to start providing in-house public works services in the near future.
Yes.
And, and as a result, we were notified by City of Lake Forest Park that they will no longer provide in public works operations to the city of Kenmore after 2018. We're actually optimistic about this change and believe it can result in improved local control of our public works services for the same or less cost. We've been running some numbers and we actually believe we'll see noticeable savings, operational savings, by making this move to go in-house. However, we will need to figure out a place to house an in-house public works crew. We have city-owned property that can serve on an interim basis, but it's, it's not large enough or it's, and it's not necessarily in the right location to serve as a temporary lo, or I mean, as a permanent location. So as a result, we're on the lookout for properties that make sense to serve as a public works facility long-term. We've actually been scouring the market and looking closely at lots of properties here in the city. Our preference is obviously to be in non-residential areas where there's already that type of use going on. Properties on 175th are a prime example. We have struck out multiple times on inquiring about properties in our commercial area, especially 175th. For the most part, property owners refuse to talk to us or entertain any discussion at all about us buying their property. So what we're finding is that a willing seller is kind of an important criterion when looking at these properties because you can find the perfect property, or actually, there's no such thing as a perfect property, but you can find a, a property that meets pretty well our criteria for what we need in a facility, but if they're not willing to sell, then it's, it's kind of a waste of time. So we've been watching the market. We found one property that just recently came in the market that meets a lot of our criteria. It's not perfect and I'm recommending that you authorize a purchase and sale agreement on this property. What this purchase and sale agreement does is it does not commit the property, it does not commit the city to purchase the property. What it does is it gives us a feasibility period to look at the property, do testing on it, figure out where any critical areas are, talk to the neighborhood, talk to the neighbors, and just get a sense of whether or not this could be a good fit for this particular property. And this property that I am talking about is at 6646 Northeast 202nd Street here in Kenmore. This property is about five and a half acres, although from what we can tell, just a little bit less than one and a half would be usable for our needs. And about one and a half acres is about what we need for use like this. That one and a half acres on that property appears to be relatively flat and clean and dry. And so there's several of the criteria that meets, however, it is in a residential area, zoned R1, and that is definitely a concern. And so during this feasibility period, we would take a look at that and really get a good sense of that and talk to the neighbors. If the city did close on the property, then you would need to do a comprehensive plan amendment and rezone it from R1 to public semi-public. And even under a public semi-public designation, we would still need to go through a conditional use permit process to be able to site a public works facility there. And of course, there would need to be things that would go along with a conditional use permit that would mitigate the effects of a public works facility, such as planting vegetated buffers and adequate setbacks and, and things like that as part of the conditional use. So the property was on the market for $1 million. We do know that, or we're being told that multiple offers are coming in on the property. I put in an offer subject to city council approval that had a $25,000 escalator in there above the purchase price. The seller countered back just this morning with $1,025,000 purchase price. And they wanted 12 days feasibility period, which is a non-starter, and I recommend that we stay with our 90-day feasibility period for the property. Also, we would need to contribute earnest money that would be refundable during the feasibility period and would also be applied to the purchase price. And $50,000 is the number that I think we can agree on with the property owner. And then the, the closing date would be seven days after the feasibility period. So with that, I'm open to any questions.
Councilmember Curtis.
So with the feasibility period, if we did our feasibility, we were finished in 45 days, we could close then.
Yes.
We wouldn't have to take the full 90.
That's true.
Mayor Baker, it sounds like you had a question?
Yes. We still have, have final approval. Even if everything works out, it comes back to us for final approval, correct?
Yeah, so what we would do is we would do a phase one and phase two environmental analysis and also a wetland delineation study. And then we would take all that information and bring it back to you. And you, as a city council, could take all the information that we've compiled during the feasibility period and then you decide whether actually you want to close on the property or not based on the information we gathered during the feasibility period.
Council, Councilmember Schubnick.
Does the information, would the information also include the public input from the neighbors?
Yes, it would. Yep.
Councilmember Marshall?
Was there some possibility of exploring the acreage not used for the storage yard as conservation acreage or conservation preservation?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Marshall, for that. So like I said, it's about five and a half acres and about one and a half is what we is usable for our needs. The others could be, the other remaining acres could be preserved for preservation purposes.
Councilmember Curtis.
So I would, I would like to speak in favor of this move. I'm not sure this is the perfect or best location in the city, but if we don't do anything, we lose all opportunity of using this. So I would say we should proceed with this and part of the public process, we can get more input and eventually we may use this spot or we may use somewhere else. But, but if we miss this opportunity, it's forever gone.
Councilmember Danuski.
Yeah, I'll be voting against this, although I acknowledge that finding a piece of property in Kenmore is going to be very tricky for this. I'm just not at this point supporting putting a public works shop in an R1 neighborhood.
Oh, can I add one more thing, Your Honor?
Of course.
Yes.
Who's running this meeting?
He's got the big stick.
How many mayor is running this meeting?
So there was a potential buyer on the property recently, but that deal fell through. But that buyer, I understand it fell through for lack of financing. But that potential buyer was actually coming in for a permit to subdivide the, subdivide the property into six lots on that smaller frontage area that we're interested in. And so they were going to put about six lots that were going to be 6,000 to 7,000 square feet apiece up close to 202nd Street. Like I said, that deal fell, fell through, but the inquiries we're getting at the permit counter are for potential buyers who would also want to buy the property and subdivide it into, into approximately six lots. So my prediction, I can't guarantee this will happen, but my prediction is that if the city did not buy this lot or this property, that it would likely be, again, no guarantees, but that it would likely be subdivided into six smaller lots fronting 202nd.
Councilmember Smith?
Thanks, Rob, for the information. I agree that it would definitely, I think it's a high probability to be divided and I'm generally supportive of it. I would not be supportive at all of a non-refundable earnest money and I would not be supportive of a feasibility period that's less than 90 days. I actually think even 120 wouldn't be bad, but definitely not, not less than 90.
And I, I talked to an environmental firm about doing a phase one, phase two. They said that they could probably do the phase one, phase two environmental in 60 days, but you know how those things work and so 90 days feels better.
Well, and, and also because depending on what is found, it could require additional information.
Good point.
Councilmember Schubnick?
I'm going to be voting against this, but I do want to, and I have a couple primary issues. One is the same as Councilmember Danuski, that I'm, I'm just not comfortable at this time with considering a residentially zoned parcel for this use until we do a thorough investigation of if there are other parcels that we wouldn't have to change the zoning. So that would, that's my primary concern. And the, so that's, that's my issue. I hope that we pursue that. I, I do understand that, you know, this is a good value financially. And so if, you know, the information comes back that the immediate neighbors are supportive, I, it's possible I will change my mind in the future. It sounds like it will be coming back to us. So that's, that's my primary issue.
Councilmember Marshall?
What did you perceive as the advantages and disadvantages of the city's property that we already own on 522, the shelve? that we already own on 522, the Shell property, I believe it's called?
Advantages are it's owned by us, it's flat, it's graded. And you can, we can step foot on it tomorrow if we wanted to. Disadvantages is it's too small, it's half an acre, we need one and a half acres. We could get away with one acre, but that would be tight. So one and a half acres is the preference. But it's a half acre, it's actually not even a half an acre, it's 20,000 square feet. And also as for a long-term use, given that it's in the heart of our downtown, I'm not sure you would want a public workshop there in the heart of our downtown and the gateway to Kenmore Village.
Can we check with Mayor Baker to see if he has any additional questions?
Mayor Baker, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Just clarification, on the Shell property, Sheila would have to move, is that correct? The coffee shop would have to move?
Yes.
So we'd effectively then almost put her out of business by forcing her to move?
We'd want to give her as much notice as possible, but yes.
Okay.
So for the audience's sake, in case you couldn't hear all that, Mayor Baker was asking if Sheila, and he means Espresso Works over on the Shell property, would have to move if we took that space, and the answer was yes. Any other questions, comments?
Even if we purchased the space, we may need to use the Shell property temporarily. So I don't, I don't want you to think that just because we purchased the space, we'll be able to move on it, move into it right away. We may need to use the Shell property for a time, even if we do purchase this property.
Councilmember Smith.
Excuse me, I just wanted to add that I think it's also worth noting, since Espresso Works came up, that I believe it's a year-to-year approval on a conditional use permit for that space. So it's, I think it's been, she's aware of the fact that, long-term, that is not a viable location.
Right, and so you, because drive-throughs are not allowed in our zoning code on that property, you grant her an exception on a year-to-year basis. Similarly, if we were to locate a public works operation on that property, you would also have to give us a one-year exception on a year-to-year basis.
Any other questions? Councilmember Marshall.
And also, don't we have the use or some small use of the property in back of the post office for vehicle storage?
Yes, and so, thank you, Councilmember Marshall. So we would use a combination of the Shell property and continue using the post office. So the city owns the post office building, and the front half of it is rented by the United States Postal Service. The back side of the post office is currently being used by the city for storage. And we also store some of our vehicles back there. So we would continue to use the backside of the post office property in these interim operations.
Councilmember Marshall.
And what efforts had been made to explore leasing of property for the city for this purpose along the more industrial corridor?
We haven't looked at leasing too aggressively because, given the fact that with leasing, you're kind of throwing away your money. You're not putting it towards something permanent. However, the same argument could be made towards using the Shell property because we would need to expend funds to prep that site as well. And so that's not money that would, or those aren't improvements that would last forever either. Any other questions? All right. Well, I just want to say I recognize that the property on 202nd is not perfect for a public workshop. I'm not sure if there is any piece of property in the city that is perfect. I am going to support this motion as kind of a hedge with the assumption that we'll work with the community to work through concerns, that we'll do our due diligence on the property, and that we'll continue looking for some suitable locations. This is though, it's a deal with a willing seller. It is a property that can serve our needs. And from what I can tell, it's about a third of the price of many of the properties that we were kind of eyeballing down in the 175th neighborhood. And 1 million versus 3 million is a huge chunk of change for us to save as a city. If we do end up moving forward with this as a permanent solution, you know, I'll be making sure, I'll be working, you know, hard to make sure that the mitigation we do does please the neighbors and that the impact to the neighborhood is minimal. Although I suspect that the impact of some pickups coming and going throughout the day might be viewed as less intrusive than six new neighbors on a small lot by some of the people around there. I could be wrong. So with that said, the chair will entertain a motion to go forward with the purchase and sale agreement for the city of Kenmore to potentially acquire the property located 6646 Northeast 202nd Street in Kenmore.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion? Bearing none, the clerk will take the roll.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Yes.
Councilmember Schumacher.
No.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski.
No.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis.
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall.
No.
Move 4-3.
All right, the motion passes. Mayor Baker, thank you for your attendance via speakerphone. The remote connection will now be terminated. Let the record reflect that Mayor Baker's attendance via speakerphone has now been terminated. Next, we're going to move on to staff reports. We have a discussion about when social media implicates the Public Records Act. Rod Casagouma, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Herbig and members of the city council. As the agenda states, that this topic is when social media implicates the Public Records Act. So I will be discussing for several minutes the interaction between the Public Records Act and its requirements to retain and disclose public records of the city and council member use of social media. This topic has become very important right now because of a recent case decided by the Court of Appeals Division Two called West versus City of Puyallup. Before I begin my presentation to you, I do want to clarify for the public and the record that when we talk about social media, it is as you would think. This covers Facebook, Instagram, Flickr, Pininterest, Snapshot, Tumblr, Twitter, et cetera. You might recall that in the early 1970s, the Public Records Act was passed by the voters in the state of Washington. At that time, public records were pieces of paper. And when anyone requested a copy of a public record, the local jurisdiction or the state of Washington created a copy. In those days, they were not very good copies, but they created a copy of the piece of paper. Over the years, that piece of paper has transformed into electronic communications that we have today. Unfortunately, over the years, the legislature has been very slow in adjusting to the change in the way that public records of the state and local jurisdictions are created and retained. Consistently, the courts have been very slow to give us direction on how to treat the new forms of communication, that is, electronic communication. We have had very good advice come from the Court of Appeals Division Two, as I said, through the case of West versus Puyallup, which was decided in February, a few months ago. And I was planning to make this presentation to you a couple of months ago, but the schedules and your council meetings didn't allow that to happen. What I'd like to do tonight is to discuss with you in fairly great detail this case because if I explain the fact pattern of it and the principles within it, you will have, and we will all have, a very good understanding of how to look at council member and, to some extent, a city official or city employee use of social media and be able to decide whether or not a council member's participation in social media through posts, for example, or answers or comments on Twitter, will be subject to the Public Records Act. And by the way, what I'll do is I'll discuss with you this case, and I have copies of the case that I can give you after the presentation. So if you feel like it, you can certainly read the case tonight or some other time. The general holding of this case is that a public official's, in this particular case, a council member's, posts on personal Facebook can be city public records, subject to disclosure if the posts relate to conduct of government and are prepared within the public official's scope of employment or official capacity. In this case, the specific holding was that Councilmember Door's Facebook posts were not public records because she did not prepare them within the scope of her official capacity as a city council member. The case and the court stated that there are three categories of posts involved. The first was brief reference to various issues. So for example, the Facebook account of this council member mentioned the city's construction of new sidewalks, the council member's participation at the AWC convention in June, and the city's budget document, among other things. The second category of posts was what the court called reference and links to city official Facebook posts regarding various issues. The city had its own Facebook account. For example, some of the posts related to the city's water testing, to a ribbon cutting event for a new park, and to city council meeting agendas. The third category of posts was what the court called reference and links to city police department official Facebook posts regarding population of homeless, a jail camera lawsuit, and block watch program. So those are the three categories of posts that were before the court and caused the court to have to decide whether or not this council member's personal Facebook account and the post on it were subject to the Public Records Act. And the first holding that the court made was that, in general, postings on a personal Facebook account, as opposed to a city Facebook account by a council member, can constitute public records if the definition of public records, which is in RCW 42560103, is satisfied. And the court was following a couple of cases where that rule was articulated. And those cases were Nissan versus Pierce County, decided in 2015, and West versus Vermillion, decided in 2016. So you can see there's a progression of about every year and a half where the court issues a pronouncement that helps us on this point. For information, for those of you who haven't been following this closely, the Nissan case, decided in 2015, was where the court held that an elected county prosecutor's work-related text messages prepared on a private cell phone in his official capacity, within his official capacity and within the scope of employment. And because they had that status, they were public records. In the Vermillion case, decided in 2016, the court held that council member emails sent and received on a personal computer through a personal email account was subject to disclosure if those records otherwise met the definition of public records. There are some records that are not deemed to be public records because they don't meet the definition. For example, a phone message just to call somebody at a phone number. So let's spend a few minutes talking about the definition of a public record. And that definition has three parts. The first is that the thing has to be a writing. The definition in the statute is very broad. And the definition of a writing is every means of recording any form of communication, regardless of physical characteristic. In the West case, the court said that all of these posts were writings, mainly because the city, in defending the case, didn't dispute the fact that these posts were writings. But I have to say that, given the definition of a writing, these posts are probably writings anyway. The second criteria of a public record is that it has to be information relating to conduct of government or performance of any governmental or proprietary function. The court said that information that refers to or impacts the actions, processes, and functions of government meets this criterion. And commented that the element is satisfied even if information only indirectly relates to the conduct of government or to governmental functions. And also that personal communications that are not work-related are not public records. So those communications have to be work-related, not personal-related. And in this case, the court interestingly said, well, the answer is yes and no. Almost all the posts were merely informational. However, conversely, almost all posts refer to governmental activities, as you recall that. Some of the information was linking the requesters to places where the requester can get city council agendas. But just like the other criterion, the court said, well, the city didn't really oppose this criterion. So we're going to assume, without deciding, that since at least some of these posts can be considered relating to government activities, we're going to say that the second criterion was satisfied. The important thing that I want to discuss with you is the third criteria of a public record, which is that the document needs to be prepared, owned, used, or retained by the agency. So prepared, owned, used, or retained by the agency. And this is the criterion that usually has all of the analysis whenever the question is whether or not a document is a public record. The court in the West case summarized favorably the Nissan case that I mentioned, Nissan versus Pierce County. In that case, the holding was that an act performed by an agency employee, in this case, the county-elected prosecutor, within the scope of employment is tantamount to an act by the agency. So if the officer or the council member is acting within the quote-unquote "scope of employment", then that is deemed to be an act of the agency itself. Now, the Nissan court, and therefore this court, said that an employee's communication is within the scope of employment, excuse me, when it meets a three-part test, which is a very important test that you should keep in mind. One, the job requires it, or two, the employer directs it, or three, it furthers the employer's interest. Or stated differently, the Public Records Act applies only to records related to the employee's public responsibilities or for council members to the council member's public responsibilities. Therefore, the inquiry is a case-by-case, specific situation analysis. The court then said, as to Councilmember Door, the three-part test under the Nissan case was, did her position require posting? Or did the city direct the posts? Or did the posts further the city's interests? And in answer to the three-part test as to Councilmember Door, the court said, her position as a council member clearly did not require that she post on Facebook. Secondly, that the city did not in any way direct the council member to prepare posts. And third, the posts did not further the city's interests. So what was furthering the city's interests all about? Well, in the Nissan case, that phrase "further city's interests", the court said that that indicated that an elected official who acts in an official capacity or conducts public business, acts in official capacity or conducts public business, is furthering the agency's interest. In this case, the court said, "There's no indication that Councilmember Dorr was acting in an official capacity by posting on her personal Facebook account. The Facebook page was not associated with the city. And the Facebook page was not characterized as an official council member page. The page was associated with Friends of Julie Dorr," which was her name, "and that Facebook page was for the use and information of her supporters, both during the election and during the time that she is a council member." The court decided that Councilmember Dorr was not conducting business on the Facebook page. And here are some of the reasons. The posts, according to the court, did not contain specific details of her work as council member regarding city council discussions, decisions, or other actions. So there was no detail about what this council member was specifically going to do, planning to do, or to discuss relating to city business. The court also said that the posts merely provided general information about city activities and occasionally about her activities in particular, such as, I said, participation at an AWC conference. The court said that Councilmember Dorr's informational posts may have furthered the city's interests to some minimal extent by providing a certain segment of the public with information about city events and activities. But the court said, "However, this tangential benefit to the city and its citizens and residents is not sufficient to establish that Dorr was acting within the scope of employment or her official capacity in disseminating general information about the city." What is very interesting about this case, in which a lot of city attorneys have been discussing and which the MRSC legal counsel have been talking about, is that despite what the court found and held, as I just explained, some of these posts look like they relate to city business, but the court disregarded them. For example, there were posts and individual replies to the posts regarding the widening of a road in the city. And at that time, the city was engaged in discussions over whether the road should be widened. The court admitted that there were two posts and individual replies regarding the widening of that road, as I mentioned, and two posts and individual replies related to land use issues that were currently pending before the city council. And the court said, "Well, we're not going to take that into account." Maybe it's because that was only one post of many, but I want to mention that to you because despite the fact that the court did not take those into account, I think that they're very important to think about. And I certainly wouldn't want to be before a court stating that a council member who posted many, many posts regarding a land use decision that was going to come before the city council was not conducting city business on the Facebook account. The final thing I want to mention to you, just as an aside, is that I watched 60 Minutes last night. There was an interview by Leslie Stahl of a well-known person whose name is Brad Parscale, who now is apparently the President Trump reelection campaign manager for the president's next election. His interview was very fascinating on this topic because what he was talking about was the fact that Facebook was used extensively by the Trump campaign in 2016 at the invitation of Facebook to develop advertising and use Facebook platforms in order to hone in on individuals based upon their preferences, as demonstrated by their reaction in commenting on or looking at advertisements that came from the campaign, particularly under his supervision. And I want to mention that because what was very interesting about one of his comments is that there is such a thing as a dark ad, which I didn't know about before last night. And apparently, dark ads are sent out by the account holder, and they will disappear within a short period of time unless the receiver opens it and then sends it to somebody else. If the receiver or receivers do not open the dark ad, then it disappears. And I just want to mention that because, as you can imagine, the retention of social media posts, particularly if the posts are made on accounts that are not controlled by a council member, a public official, or the city, can be, the retention of that can be a very difficult issue. And if they aren't retained, then a court might not react very happily if it's told that, "Well, these posts were made," or "The comments were made on Twitter, and they disappeared," or "They haven't been retained, and therefore they're not accessible now." Now, as you know, we can take screenshots through certain apps of what is on a Facebook account temporarily, but, boy, that's a hassle. You have to download an app, and you have to understand how to do that, or you have to take your cellphone, and you have to take a picture of your screen that's hooked to a desktop computer. I just want to mention that because there's a lot of issues surrounding social media and the retention of public records. And therefore, you have to be very cognizant of not only the criterion rules that I mentioned to you, but on the fact that retaining those records is going to require a lot of thought.
All right.
With that, I'm sorry, I went a little long, but do you have any questions?
Do you have any questions? Councilmember Schumacher.
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. I'm trying to get back to them. So here locally, we have Kenmore Neighbors Facebook page, right? So people post, they post questions, they post comments. I'm hoping for just a little more clarification on, you know, whether and how we can respond, and if we do want to respond, what do we need to do? My understanding is that the main issue is that if you post something that is a public record, it meets the criteria, that you simply retain a copy, I mean, because the issue is access, correct?
Correct.
So would it be safe to say that it would be okay to post if we copy in some way, you listed a few ways, and retain a copy of that so that it can be searched?
The answer to your specific question, which is very articulated very well, is yes.
Okay.
That there would be a, there would be a...
Okay.
If you were going to post on a community Facebook page...
Yeah.
On a topic that is related to city business, let's say...
Yes, right.
Then, to be safe and conservative, you as council members should retain a copy of that posting, because there's a very good chance that if you don't, the Facebook account people might delete it right away, and then we will have no copy of it.
And so, follow-up question that's slightly different is if we wanted to, on our own Facebook page, which gets back to your earlier example, have some sort of twice-monthly e-news or something like that that would be put out, and it would have city topics on it that may or may not be limited to information only. In other words, they could cross the line into public record. Again, would the issue really be simply making sure we retain it so that it can be accessed?
True.
Okay.
However, you could certainly ask yourself the question whether the monthly or bimonthly newsletter is really relating to city business that causes it to be a public record, or is it the dissemination of information about the city, which is generally available to the public, even on the city's website, that it would cause a court like this court to say, "You know, that's not really the discussion of city business by a council member, and therefore, we'll just treat that as the dissemination of public information," which really shouldn't be subject to the Public Records Act disclosure requirements. However...
It's a fine line.
There's a fine line between just disseminating information and actually commenting on city business. And that would be my caveat, is that there could be a real problem if there's the dissemination of information, which is generally available, with some comment about the information and not retaining the statement or the comment.
So is the addition of the editorial that you think possibly makes it into a public record?
Yes.
Okay.
According to the way this court, that's why I wanted to go over what this court was actually saying, because according to this court, that does cause the post to perhaps cross the line, and that's why you have to be careful. We're all dealing with the fact that this case had, I think, very unique fact pattern, but at least the criteria that I mentioned to you, set up by the court, we can all use to apply to any fact pattern that we get engaged in on social media.
Do you have any other, any other questions?
Thanks for your time.
I have a couple of questions. I want to check with them first, though. You know, we do, like, as Councilmember Schumacher pointed out, we have a group that has 7,200 people in it, and as we all know, we have about 22,000 people total in Kenmore. Not all those folks live in Kenmore, but it's a good chunk of the city. And I feel like part of my job, on some level, is when somebody posts something, and maybe they're asking a question about a project that's coming up, or maybe there's a misstatement about something and just some factual corrections need to occur, that sometimes it's helpful to have a council member jump in and say, "Well, actually, you know, it's, you know, we're only spending X numbers of dollars on this, and, you know, or we're not considering that," or, you know, things like that, things of that nature, jumping in just kind of correcting the record a little bit.
Okay.
But, you know, these are things where sometimes people will tag us and say, "Hey, Councilmember Herbig, can you clear this up?" You know, and then I'm on my phone, and I look down, and I go, "Okay, I got pulled in this conversation now. I need to answer." So I kind of feel like part of my job is to, on some level, be a conduit for information from the city to folks, which is part of why I brought up this topic at our retreat and while you're here today. But if an issue is coming before us in a couple of weeks, maybe not land use, because I know that there's a whole nother set of things around land use, but plastic bags, we're talking about plastic bags today. Let's assume that in the next couple of weeks, this will pop up on Kenmore Neighbors. People are going to ask, "Well, what do you think?" And somebody may post and tag us and say, "You know, how are you guys going to vote on this? You know, are we allowed to..." I mean, assuming that they're only asking one or two of us, I'll get to the rest of it later, but assuming they're asking...
Okay.
Let's say they post, they ask...
Very good point.
Yes, we'll get to that. Let's say they post, and they ask, "You know, Deputy Mayor Herbig, how are you going to vote on this?" And I say, "Yeah, I'm in support of it, and here are my reasons." Is that, would that be considered a public record?
It would be.
You think? Okay. Now, to spring it to the OPMA question, because I know for a fact, you know, I know that probably almost everybody, at least six of us up here, are members of the group. We try to be generally fairly, you know, if somebody else had jumped in and answered the question, I stay out of it. But at what point are we kind of bumping up against the Open Public Meetings Act?
The same principles that we have discussed for many, many years on email communications, that if they're serial in nature, can result in a violation of the Open Meetings Act, would apply to, I think, comments or postings on social media. So you have to be very careful with those, just as you do for email communications between each other. Because one of the downsides is that if you're posting, you may not know that there are other council members posting comments right away, or you just might not be aware of it because those posts have been removed. So it's the same caveat that we would have for exchanging emails. But I'm glad, Councilman Herbig, that you pointed out the land use problem, because, you know, my clear advice to you is that think about whether a land use matter, a potential land use matter, might be coming to you as city council for a decision, either on appeal or initially. Because if the matter, and it's a land use matter, is coming to you, then the same restrictions apply to social media as with any other form of communication, written, email, or otherwise.
Because land use would put us into a quasi-judicial role?
Yes.
Okay.
And as you know, you cannot be discussing a land use matter outside of the facts and evidence that you hear through the reports that are presented to you, or through a public hearing, or through actual testimony.
Okay. And then, you know, when I was up for reelection, I have a campaign Facebook page, and I comment on city business there. At what, is there a point where my kind of campaign posts become public record in some way? I know it's...
Yes, according to this case, when you start giving your opinions on city business as opposed to telling people where to get information...
Okay, because, you know, you have people who do, you know, who run for election, and they have email lists, and they may send out an email to all their friends from their campaign account, saying, you know, "I'm proud of my accomplishments, and here's what I want to get done next year." That could constitute, I mean, that sounds like that would fall into that category, but then you have this email on, you know, you know, one of those constant contact servers or something that's now possibly a public record?
Do you repeat that question? I didn't quite follow that.
So let's say I have a, let's say I have an email list that I'm using for a campaign, and then I send out an email, you know, saying, "I'm proud of my accomplishments, and here's what I want to accomplish in my next term, and, you know, give me money or vote for me or whatever." And I send that out. Is there a world where that becomes a public document somehow?
You just said email, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a private email, it's for campaign purposes, it's...
No.
I'm just trying for it.
No, no.
No? Okay.
My understanding is that communications with your supporters about your campaign is not a public record.
Because it's not in my role as a city council member, or is it my role as a candidate?
Right.
Okay.
And it's not relating to the business before the council.
Okay.
It's thanking your supporters or telling them what you're going to do as a, if you're elected as a council member. Is that the...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Am I phrasing that correctly?
I think so, yes.
Yeah.
This whole thing is very complicated, so...
It is. So, you know, the bottom line is, if you're participating with your constituents, actually, in any manner, just think about what you're doing, but be very careful when it's social media, that, as I said, the big caveat is, whatever you're communicating may be terminated, may be eliminated very quickly, and then we get into that dilemma of not having the record when someone is demanding that reproduce it.
Okay. Can I ask something? So I think what I heard was, let's say a council member is called out or tagged, I think is the term, on a social media page. One way the council member could respond and avoid public records retention issue is by saying, "I appreciate the question. Feel free to email me directly at my city email, or feel free to contact the city manager." And would that avoid the social media need to, the record retention need on social media? If it just says, "I appreciate the question, let, give me a call," or "Call the city manager."
The answer is yes.
Okay. But that ticked...
The communication in the other media, however, would be covered.
What, say it again? What?
Well, whatever the response is in the other, in the other media, email, whatever, that would be covered.
Sure.
That would be a public record.
Mm-hmm. But in the process, you're ticking off the couple hundred people that might be following that comment.
Yeah.
Councilmember Schumacher.
This is a practical problem.
Thanks for the, I think, clarification. I do have a question on something like the property discussion we had this evening for the property on 202nd, knowing that there will be a land use decision, if we were to purchase it, that will come to us. Is that, does that impact how we can discuss it and how we can talk to our constituents about that? Even though we're not under contract, we don't, we don't even own it, but we know clearly that the intent is to go down a particular path if we purchase it. So I'm just, I'm wondering how that, if there's any implications there.
Any discussions you have in the DIAS are not subject to the Public Records Act. So what you might be talking about is the appearance of fairness doctrine. However, assuming that can even apply to the public discussion here at DIAS or in this chambers, the appearance of fairness doctrine does not apply unless there is some application or some specific land use decision that's pending. And my opinion is that unless you have a valid purchase of sale agreement and the fees... And my opinion is that unless you have a valid purchase of sale agreement and the feasibility period contingency has been satisfied, that you don't have anything pending before you anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that's exactly what I wanted to understand. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other staff reports?
Yeah, one more item. So quite a while ago, the city got some safe routes to schools, grant funding, put new sidewalks leading up to Kenmore Middle School, and we were able to do some fun things there on that main intersection, including a seat wall, and we put a picture of a Kenmore colt, which is the mascot for Kenmore Middle School, and we put the word Kenmore there in the Kenmore Middle School orange. And Councilmember Curtis has been so patient, because he asked me this question a very long time ago, and I've been remiss in getting back to him. But when, when Councilmember Curtis drove by it, and he lives literally a stone's throw from that thing, he was like, why is there a picture of a horse, and why is it orange? And so he's, Councilmember Curtis is suggesting that we do this. So right now, it just says Kenmore, and he's recommending that we put MS, that we add that on to the seat wall, so it'll make more sense that it's the middle school we're talking about, and then hopefully people will go, oh, that must be the mascot. So anyway, I don't have a strong opinion on it, and given that it takes four of you to get me to do something, I thought I'd bring this in front of you. It's $1,200 to add the M dot S dot. Discussion, Councilmember Curtis?
Yes. I think it's nice to have clarity that this horse has to do with the school, not the city of Kenmore. And actually, the sign that's on the road right there actually uses the MS as middle school, so Kenmore MS has now become a standard thing that everybody apparently knows that means middle school, as opposed to junior high, I guess we used to call them. So I think just for clarity, it tells the whole picture. This horse, the word Kenmore, and middle school are the story. It's not the city of Kenmore has a mascot, that the horse. So I think for clarity, I would like to see it.
Councilmember Danuski.
Yeah, I actually think this is more confusing. There's no Kenmore MS anywhere. My kids have both gone there, and I've never seen that on any writing anywhere. That's more confusing to me than there's Kenmore, and I think it's actually okay if you don't always know anything, and you have to do a little research to figure it out if you want to.
It's on the roadside, right across the street from us.
Yeah, this is confusing to me, so I guess I'm not in support of it.
Councilmember Schrempf, and then Marshall, and then Smith.
Just a quick question. So this is, this is not in front of the school? I'm just trying to remember where this is physically.
Yeah, it's not directly in front of the school, but it's on that intersection on the way to the school.
Okay.
It's 202nd. 202nd and 66, yeah.
And 1,200. I thought I remembered a much higher figure. Okay, so 1,200. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Marshall?
As the other colt on this council, the, in all seriousness, the, in a sense, the need for further clarification seems unnecessary to me, because I cannot associate colts with anything other than the junior high school I went to, and I believe that the, the knowledge is, should be universal in Kenmore. However, I am not opposed to a further clarification. The only thing in this graphic seems to me, the MS should be a little more separated from the Kenmore. So I don't have a strong, I guess I have strong feelings both ways, but I'm happy either way.
Councilmember Smith?
I don't think it's necessary, and thank you for calling it a colt and not a horse.
It's a horse.
I also tend to not think it's completely necessary, and I think $600 a letter seems a little steep, and I don't see the point personally, so just where I am.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that this sign be clarified by adding the MS for middle school, because this sign is not right by the school. So, and there are a few people in the city who did go to junior high or there, and our city continues to grow every year by some number of thousands, and they may not know that either.
Do we have a second?
I'll second, yeah.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Clerk, take the roll.
Councilmember Danuski?
No.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Abstain.
Councilmember Schrempf?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Three noes, two yeses, and abstention.
Motion fails.
Fails.
That's all I have, Your Honor. All right. Council reports. Councilmember Smith?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Councilmember Marshall?
I was heartened to see at least a couple of weeks, or within the last couple of weeks, that King County spent a great deal, multi, or is planning to spend a great deal, multi millions of dollars on open space acquisition, whereas before, I had heard in various precincts about the lack of money King County had to spend on it, seemed a lot of things. So it's just a general sense to remind everybody that where there's a will, there can be a way at times, despite seemingly insurmountable financial barriers here and there. Also, I appreciate the update on the hangar. I am concerned about the political clause and its application, as was related here tonight, but I don't want to jump to conclusions too quickly, and want to explore the matter further with the city manager to make sure, I know what happened in that situation, and that we are, of course, if we've got an open public forum in the hangar, that we're not making it any content-based decisions on freedom of speech. So I just want to follow up with that with the city manager, and perhaps report back to the councils for the scrutiny, or not as it fits.
Councilmember Curtis?
So reporting on the East Side Transportation Partnership meeting last week, we had two reports. One was Commissioner Peter Steinbrock from the Port of Seattle. And it's amazing how big the Port of Seattle is. So $22.5 billion in economic activity for the Sea-Tac Airport, it's a whole big, huge sections of our economy. The maritime international trade, $47.4 billion, and then the cruise industry, $501 million. So they do an amazing amount of things, so it just behooves us, when we vote for those people, we really need to be paying attention, because they probably have as much impact as like almost county council members. It's huge. So it was a great report and update, a lot of improvements occurring at the airport, multiple phases, multiple years, and lots of money. The second one was Metro's Community Connections, kind of a report on all the new things, you know, how do you make that last mile, and how do you get people around when there isn't a bus stop right near? And the thing I was the most impressed with is they did pilots, and they actually canceled some of them. Nobody showed up, and they actually canceled them. And for city government, well, any government, they tend to create things and then not necessarily evaluate and not stop them, so I was pretty impressed. So they're trying to use their money wisely, improve the way to get to the metro, so I was, it was a very useful report.
Councilmember Schrempf?
Just one brief note. Also, the same night as our first summer movie, there's a great event, I think five or six local Kenmore clubs are getting together to have a picnic and comedy competition down at the Kenmore Community Club, and it's a great opportunity for folks to get to know the various clubs, the Heritage Society Arts of Kenmore, the Community Club, Waterfront Activity Center, various clubs. And so I hope if you're not at the movie, that you consider coming out to that.
Councilmember Danuski?
My only thing is, next week I will not be at the meeting, because my son is graduating high school that night, so I will be doing that.
Councilmember Curtis, beat me to the ETP report. It was a good meeting. The thing that stuck out to me, actually, about the port was in their capital project list, they're going to spend $450 million to bring up to speed, to fix, to expand capacity on their baggage moving system. Like, just to move baggage, you're talking almost a half a billion dollars. It's amazing. Anyway, it was a good meeting, and unless there's any further business to come before the council, we are adjourned.